Texas Government Code is many like call to order being the board trustees, the Austin School District for Monday, April 2nd, 2012 at 6:33 PM. Board meeting closed session deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties dismissed or dismissal of public officer and employee, the duration of purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, ratio negotiated contract perspective gift to the district, the ratio for commercial or financial information, the board has received from a business prospect or financial information or other incentive to a business prospect and order consult with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplating litigation on a settlement offer which the school, no matter which school's legal counsel to mention be confidential in accordance with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087 and 551.071 respectively. Welcome, everybody. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Second, second, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Let's do the pledge.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Ms. Moya, in rest. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Mr. Torres will not be here this evening. He had a little health issue he dealt with. He's fine, but he just has some medication that didn't want, didn't let him drive. So he's all good, but he just couldn't drive downtown. And Mr. Guzman, I got a message from him that he'll be about 30 minutes late. He's got a work commitment. Okay, so let us get started. Dr. Kestefen, we've got two items on the agenda, 60 minutes. Let's rock and roll.
Mr. President, trustees, for the past three months, board policy DGB local, section one and section two consultation with non-advisory professional employees and consultation with classified employees has been under review. The policy which recognizes a consultation agent was first suspended on December 12th, 2011, to provide the administration an opportunity to explore options to potentially expand employee input considered by the consultation agent when addressing key district issues. At the February 20th board work session, four options regarding this policy and the consultation process were discussed for consideration as a possible action at the February 27th regular board meeting. The board subsequently voted to continue the suspension of the policy through May 1st, 2012, to provide the administration and the current consultation agent, Education Austin, more time to vet the options for review at tonight's meeting, for review, so that we could discuss them at tonight's meeting and work toward agreement on one recommendation. The board is scheduled to take action on this policy at the April 23 regular board meeting. To highlight the options and the new option that Education Austin and the Austin Independent School District has been discussing, Chief Human Capital Officer, Michael Howser, is here to highlight those for you. The materials are in your, in your board materials, and you can see the various options under the tabs. The one that we'll talk about the most tonight is actually option five, the modified exclusive-inclusive consultation, which is the revised concept that we've been working on in more detail and will probably be presented close to true to its form for action in April. But I'll ask Michael to highlight those things, and then he'll turn it back over to me so we can turn it over to the board for discussion.
Super. Thank you, Dr. Kestefen, and thank you, board members, for taking some time to work through this policy with us again. The notebook that you have in front of you this evening has five different tabs in it, and as you recall, a few months ago, we started this process and we looked at four different options. One was keeping the current policy the way that it exists today, looking at a modified exclusive model, an inclusive model, and then perhaps looking at just moving to a board regulation. As a result of our last discussion, what the administration worked toward was working in collaboration with Education Austin. We've worked toward what we consider to be a solid recommendation for looking at a modified exclusive-inclusive consultation policy. So it's a little bit of a couple of different worlds here. In your notebook today, behind tab five, it starts really on page one of 21, and I just want to remind you that as we look at these changes, the changes in this policy that are being suggested would impact the non-supervisory employees, those professional people, and the classified folks. So you're going to find there are really three parts in the, in board policy DGB local. One is for the non-supervisory professionals, one's for the classified, and then one is for our supervisors. The two that are in play tonight are for the professional and classified. Wanted to highlight where we're looking, and you will find on page two of 21, and as we begin to move through, I'll just give you the highlights of what is really different. The consultation policy remains the same with the exception of some of these items that will be listed. Number one is that the election process would still be in play, but the term of office would be reduced from four years to two years. So that's how it begins. On page two of 21, you would find that as part of the commitment that each consultation team would need to designate a lead representative. There has been some confusion over the last year or so, as we've worked through consultation, the consultation process about leadership. And we all know that Education Austin is going through some changes. They're going to have an election in May that will give them a president, but it has been a little bit confusing, and regardless of their status with selecting leadership, we would require that during the consultation process, there would be a designated lead for both parties. We think that would greatly eliminate some of the confusion that has occurred. The next piece is that, as you begin to look through on page three of 21, is looking at an opportunity to have greater input from the employee organizations and from the employees. For not having a lack of an acronym, if you'll see on page three of 21, on three of 21, we're looking at creating what would be considered the consultation agent advisory council. And so if you can note on page three of 21, it's called the CAAC. This would be a group of people that would be committed to assisting Education Austin in providing more input in looking at policies and conditions of employment. And if you'll permit me, let me just explain just for a moment what the CAAC would be. This is the consultation agent advisory council. It would be comprised of the employee organizations that have a membership of 5% or more people in this district, and that would include every organization that we're working with currently in this, in AISD. So there would be one member from each of the organizations that would be part of this advisory council. In addition to that, what we'd like to do is take a look at our vertical teams, and our vertical teams then would hold an election, and there would be a representative from each vertical team who would sit on this advisory council. That would be a total of 12. In addition to that, there would be one more member elected, and that member would collectively represent Carruth, Administrative Center, Baker, and Skyline. So as you look at the issue of input for the consultation agent, there would be a requirement that they would work with the CAAC. The CAAC would have the organizations as a representative. You would have the vertical teams and the administrative component. People who would run for those offices do not need to be affiliated with any particular unit. They can simply put their name on a ballot, and I'll collaboratively work with Education Austin as we go through an election process, finding who those individuals will be. They would serve a term of two years that would parallel the time that the consultation agent would be in place. The commitment from Education Austin or the consultation agent would be to meet with these people monthly prior to the agenda for consultation, and that's where they would gain the input from these individuals. One of the checking factors that we've talked about, too, is that there would be an evaluation after each meeting, so that the administration could figure on seeing the effectiveness of the meeting and the scope of the meeting, so that there would be some checks and balances. And so we would like to be able to see that as an opportunity for greater input from all the employees throughout the district that would give a checkpoint for the consultation agent to receive input from these other entities. The other piece that's a bit different in here as well is we did refer to the good faith opportunities and clauses for the individuals that are involved in the consultation process. And on page four of 21, it indicates that the consultation piece would require that both parties, when there's an agenda item on the table that is being exchanged through proposals, would remain in that posture of working through a consultation process unless an impasse was declared. We also were smart enough, as we worked with the co-presidents, to say that there should be some sort of a clause in this area that would say that by mutual agreement, the consulting teams could say that some of this information could be shared more publicly if we thought it was most appropriate for the benefit of this district. And we were thinking in terms of TREs and some other things that might require more of a group effort, even though those things are consultation items that are moving through a process. So in a quick review, then, what we've done is we've worked with Education Austin over the last month. We've been able to take a look at trying to blend what we've heard from comments that were made throughout discussions that we've all been involved in. We tried to create a system that would be a two-year checkpoint, that an election could be triggered every two years, that there would be a consultation agent advisory council, that there would be leadership during the process, and greater input and greater commitment to the idea of good faith discussions. And we have felt like through these meetings with, particularly with Ray and with Ken, Ray Nasu and Ken Zavaris, the co-presidents of Education Austin, that we have found some fairly solid ground that feels pretty comfortable at this point. So I hope that gives you at least a quick overview of what is now considered the fifth option.
Mr. President, trustees, this summarizes where we are in this process for this evening. Since the last board discussion of the policy in February, the administration has worked with Education Austin to bring forward as much, as close to a joint recommendation as we can, of which Mr. Howser just described. It specifically requires expanded employee input and a commitment by the consultation agent while maintaining an election process. Now, while the two co-presidents of Education Austin, who worked with the administration to create this option five, have indicated that they are in agreement with the option, they have also reminded the administration that, leading up to the official vote, they're still working with their own executive board and are working through a complete endorsement when they finish their discussions with their executive board to see where everyone shakes out. But that being said, at least from the administration's perspective, this best represents what we think our recommendation will shape up to be for board action on April 23. And then we'll continue to work with Education Austin to monitor what's happening with their board on the other side in preparation for April 23. So, Mr. President, trustees of the board, this concludes our presentation.
So, thank you, Dr. Kestefen. So just, we have, we have five options, but if I'm understanding what your opening remarks is that the intention at this point with the administration would come back with option five is the recommended action, recommend, the recommendation for board action on the 23rd at this point. So, okay, very good. So open up for comments and or questions, Ms. Moya.
Thank you. Dr. Kestefen or Mr. Howser, were the other employee organizations involved in developing option five?
No, ma'am, they were not. My, my work worked, my efforts worked solely with Education Austin. I have been in communication with ATPE at this particular point, and they are reviewing the, the option five at this point. I have not received their input on how they feel about the option. I do know in working with ATPE that they were looking for some sort of a placeholder or some improvement that would at least give them the opportunity as an organization to be more involved in a formal process if there was to still be a consultation agent. So short answer is no, ma'am, they have not been a part of this solution.
But, but just to, just to clarify that a little bit, there has been, or at least there are, you know, parts of our professional association groups that have shared with us their feedback on what they would like to see as an improved process while not formal. Like, for example, some people did write a letter to the board and the administration summarizing some of the points that they wanted to raise about their interest in, their interest in the different options. They also shared with us specific commentary on things that they'd like to see approved, improved. So while it, you know, again, we're, we're in a consultation, I mean, a, yes, a consultation structure with Education Austin, and, and that, they really are the lead for these discussions under the structure that we have in policy and the structure that the board has approved. So, but that did not, you know, require that other people could not send information both to Ed Austin and to AISD if they wanted to share their thoughts. And, and so we took all those things into consideration. If anyone either shared stuff with us verbally or in writing, I directed Michael to bring that to the table to discuss with Education Austin so they could go over the points that people raised. While those people could not directly participate, we did, I did ensure, at least from the administrative side, that those things were raised and discussed in part during the discussion and bring together the next best option.
During our policy committee discussions on, on this particular policy and the different options, Michael, you specifically asked Education Austin and ATPE to give you their, their idea of what a policy would look like. And so, so we did that while we were in discussions with the policy committee, and now we've got, we've got option number five, and yet we didn't extend the same courtesy to the other organizations that we did earlier on. I don't understand why we didn't do that.
Ms. Moya, I think as Dr. Kestefen has pointed out, those comments did not go neglected.
I'm not, I'm not saying that they did. I'm saying that I don't understand why we extended a courtesy at one point early in the, in the conversation, and we didn't do it later when we were still, when we were continuing to work through things and giving Education Austin an opportunity to help us formulate the, the, an option, option number five, and why we didn't ask one or all of the other organizations to give us feedback at the same time. I don't understand that. That doesn't, that goes completely against what we did early on. I just don't understand why we would do that.
Ms. Moya, to the best of my ability, I can answer it this way. We did work with the other units when we developed the other four options, when we brought the other options in. It was my path to work with Education Austin to see if we could perhaps find something that was suitable for both parties. It doesn't preclude the fact that, you know, the, if there's the will of the board to look at other options, these other things still exist. You will find if you speak with ATPE or TCTA that, you know, they still prefer as the total piece, the inclusive model. What we were trying to do was look for another option that would still create some of the opportunities that the district has had in the past with the current process. And that's why it was amended to, to take it down to two years and to create an opportunity for a vertical teaming approach, to give more input and for the organizations to be there as well. So it is a compromise that was, was actually a spinoff from where we had been before.
I fully recognize that it's a compromise, and it's definitely, you know, a completely different approach than what I had, you know, than the things that had been presented to us in the policy committee meeting. So I'm not, I'm not objecting to, to, to the outcome. I'm objecting to how we did things differently while in the same process of, of working on this policy. And I, I just don't, I don't know why we would, why we would not invite their input while this is being developed, instead of saying, here, here's option number five, give us your feedback, because you didn't have any input in developing it. And I just, I, that, that's not within the spirit of what my work was as chair of the policy committee. So I'm just go on record to say that, and we can just move on.
Okay, other comments, questions, Ms. Barksdale?
Thank you. Option five seems to me to be collaboratively developed. I appreciate the work that's been done. The administration seems to have been responsive to input from the board the last time we heard about this, and I'll be able to support option five. I think it works to provide, to protect collective bargaining and provide employee input. I do have a question, though, about the updated language on page four of 21 in option five. And I think I raised this the last time we discussed it, about the good faith clause whereby parties refrain from taking issues upon those consultation proposals directly to the board. And Dr. Kestefen had explained at that time that in, you know, traditional collective bargaining setups, this is, you know, fairly standard, you know, way to proceed. I'm still dubious about the idea that I can't, as a board member, reach out to any party at any point if I have a question. So does that preclude me from doing that?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Barksdale, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, Ed Austin has its own executive board as we have ours. When you go in a consultation and you, at both parties, identify that agenda item as a consultation item, you are expected, as the two entities, to work in good faith with each other without interference, to allow the two parties to kind of work their way through whatever issues arise. That doesn't preclude someone from Ed Austin's board or our board to send a question to me, to your superintendent, or in their case, one of the co-presidents, and say, I have a question about this, or can you, you know, I just want to say, this is what I'm thinking. You can do that, but what we do not, what we, what we work very hard not to do is to have it be either you must go do this from one trustee's perspective, because that's not how we work as a board. But the second thing is, you know, it's considered, but there is no expectation that, you know, if it's discussed or something, that it must go in that direction. So you can always share that stuff with your lead of the organization, in this case, the superintendent or co-presidents, but that, but that it is not, it is not perceived as direction. It is, you know, your feedback about something that you're thinking about. What is a gross violation is, for example, if the superintendent or my designee calls their executive board, or, or someone from our board calls, you know, into their space or vice versa, or someone independently writes to the board and, you know, representing Education Austin, for example. So there is a, there is an agreement, a policy agreement, that, you know, we really are both given the authority to work it out between the two entities until you reach an impasse or a solution. And it is at that point that both parties are generally in agreement, and when you're coming out, you have both governance boards see the agreed-upon structure, and at that point, you know, you can, you pretty much, I mean, what we're doing is we're giving folks the authority to kind of work through those things and really come up with a common or joint solution. And, and it is, I mean, it's a discipline. It's a, it's a, it would be a real discipline between AISD and Education Austin in particular as the consultation agent to, to commit to that. And it's not everything. So when you do an agenda, it's not every time you meet, you know, you're officially everything is, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just her proposals, formal proposals.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, so not everything is going to be considered at the same level, but there are some things that we will both identify and say, okay, we need to really take the time and work this through before, you know, we come away from the table to then bring to the rest of the universe or your governing board. But that, you know, yeah, and you know how this works. It doesn't, it doesn't stop the board from weighing in with me as the superintendent, as you do on many things. But the expectation is that, you know, that, that space on, you know, these proposals that we're talking about are, you know, protected for, for us to be able to really work them through before bringing them to the board or the public for, you know, open discussion. And everybody recognizes, even when you bring a proposal forward, that there still may be some changes and adjustments, but that you can, you can be rest assured that this kind of agenda item, if it doesn't reach an impasse and instead we work it out, that at least the administration and your, and the association or the consultation agent is in agreement. And that's what we're, you know, that's what we want to be able to do.
Thank you for that. With that, I think that I hear you there. Is there some way the language can just be modified, just a little bit on that red section at the top of page four, to where we're relying on the good faith of both parties to do that and take out refrain? That just seems, I don't, I can't think of the right word for it, but I think if both parties are acting in good faith for a particular outcome, which is to keep the negotiations or the, or the issue at hand between the two parties until an impasse has been reached, is there any way to modify the language to where it relies on that good faith of both parties without the stronger language of the parties refraining from talking to the board? Because I would expect that if it's there, I know you certainly will, and I would expect that Education Austin would follow that.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Barksdale, and we, you know, we, we can go back and talk about it with Education Austin, but, you know, good policy is clear in its direction, and this is just one of the areas that have been a real sticking point. And we did come to agreement that, I mean, I can't say, again, you know, I've got my board, they've got their board, but at least as the two parties getting this, this document put together, we did agree that we could, you know, try with this language and, and be clear about our expectations around the consulting teams and what's appropriate to bring forward and until there's an, until after there's an impasse. So as the superintendent and on behalf of the administration, I'd like to keep it in there, but I'll take, if the whole board agrees that it needs to be removed.
Well, I'll say this, I think you guys have done good work so far, so I've made my comment. I'll leave it to you and Ed Austin to work it out.
We'll go back and talk about it, and maybe we can think of some other language, but I just want, I wanted to be clear that on these things that are consultation proposals, we really aren't bringing out until we agree that there's an impasse, and we do need to go to our boards to help us work it through. So, but we will, I will take that and make a note that that's something we can revisit.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Snyder?
I also think that this is a good step in the right direction, at least, and it's something I could support as well, but I additionally have concerns about the good faith issue here. You know, to me, it's just, it's a fundamental issue of, we have a right as individuals to be able to talk to people who are likely to represent us. And I understand the point about wanting to work things out in consultation, but I've also seen the consultation agreement, particularly the impasse clause of it be used where it was a method to stop communication happening. And, you know, I, I totally get, agree with the point of you want to try and resolve it there, but, you know, I don't think it should be used as something to prohibit communication, and unfortunately, in the past, that's what I've seen it used as. So, you know, I would additionally be interested in seeing modified verbiage here to at least reflect the point that, you know, they have a right to talk to us as their elected representatives. It shouldn't be to abuse or outrun, outmaneuver, outflank the consultation process, but if there's an issue that needs to be brought up to the board or to their elected representatives, they need to be able to do so. And, you know, kind of conversely, I feel that if I need clarification from someone, whether it's Education Austin or ATPE or whoever, that I should at least be able to go talk to them about it and figure out what, what the real issues are. So I would also be interested in seeing modified language here.
Dr. Kestefen?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Schneider, just to be perfectly clear, that this proposed policy change does not limit anyone's individual rights clear, that this proposed policy change does not limit anyone's individual rights to free speech, to be clear. Our employees always have a right to address the board during our citizens' communication and through other communication channels that y'all know exist today. But Education Austin is not an individual, it's an organization. And, and they do not have these rights. It's rather a, it has, the way it has its authority with AISD is through the policy that we create. And so while the change in the policy would actually, might actually affect the ability of Education Austin to communicate as a group about consultation proposals with trustees, it actually does not limit the rights of individuals under state or constitutional law. So I want to make that clear. But the other piece is, you know, we, I mean, I just, I want to seriously consider, or, you know, or put on the table, if we're going to have a consultation policy, I mean, why have a consultation policy if we aren't going to actually have consultation proposals that need to be worked out so that we can jointly bring the best recommendations to both of our boards? So, again, it's not meant to limit any individual, but it is meant to set the rules down about engagement between the two organizations. And so there is a difference between the individual and the organization. And so long as we have a policy that requires that these two organizations work together, I do want to see some, you know, rules for engagement about how the two organizations are expected to work and when they work in this way. And it, and again, it's not for every single thing that we talk about. It is about, it will, though, affect significantly the consultation proposals themselves that we've identified as falling into this range. And we want the space to be able to do a professional job for both of our, both of our governing boards. So I do want to separate individuals from organizations. And I also want to be clear that the purpose of this policy is to really bring some teeth and a, and a lot more focus to our consultation work so that we do a better job and you have, you spend less time, you know, thinking about all the relational stuff that has to happen and more time, as a governing board, really, you know, sinking your teeth into policy impacts of the recommendations that both of these organizations would be bringing forward and hopefully bringing forward in agreement.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Howser, I just have a question on page four of 21 and 12 of 21. It has the requirement of the consultation agent. Wait a minute, I'm wrong. Three of 21.
Yes, ma'am.
And 12 of 21.
I'm sorry, which number is three?
Three of 21 and 12 of 21.
Yes, ma'am.
And it lists the, how the CAAC shall be comprised, and, and on three of 21, it speaks of the election of non-supervisory professional employees, and on 12 of 21, it speaks of the election of classified employees. Can you talk to me about why we have, is, I mean, is this two separate groups? Is it?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Bradley, because the policy is written to provide an opportunity for two separate pieces of representation, there would be two groups that would be working through this process. So you would be identifying one classified employee and one professional employee, and these would be two separate meetings that would be going on. We wanted to do that because the board policy itself is split in, actually, into three parts, but when you have the professional people and then the classified, we wanted to make certain that people from both job forces would have the ability to be on a representative team and a representative process. I think there was some concern, at least from my perspective, that if you just opened it up for one elected person, it might be slanted toward a certain type of employee. And we'd like to be able to stay true to the form of the policy separating the two.
And I guess I'm really not getting it. Can you just kind of explain it, maybe?
With, when you elect 12 members who are professionals, or if you just opened up 12 slots, you might see that there would be a slanted opportunity where maybe more professional people than classified people would be elected. And in the spirit of fairness, and since the policy does split and the elected representative does have to go out and win the votes for the professional people and then win the votes for the classified people, you could conceivably see where perhaps one day you might have two different employee organizations, one that represents the professionals, one that represents the classified. And so until the policy was combined as just for employees, it appears to be the best move forward because there is the opportunity to have separate representatives for either side, to have the process in play for both types of employees. It was meant to be the degree of fairness so that the classified people would have a chance to represent their feelings as vertical teams, and then the professional people as well. It doubles up the work right now for Education Austin, but Education Austin represents both sides of the House.
So what happens if you, you get conflicting opinions from both groups? I mean, is there an opportunity for collaboration, or?
It's a very good question, because when you open up the House, you get a lot more opinions. The, what we will do, if you've noticed, is that we are going to require at the end of each meeting that there would be an evaluation of how that meeting, how that meeting became effective or ineffective, and was it something that was worthy from the people, from the people who are participating in it from their perspective. If we begin to sense that those meetings are not productive, or they be, you know, one of the comments that we heard is sometimes they turn into a recruiting campaign, we wanted to be able to put a check and balance on it so that there was the opportunity to see that those meetings were productive. If they become unproductive, then it would be incumbent upon us as the administration to sit with the parties to try to figure out the best path forward. But at the onset, in the spirit of moving the system with greater input for the consultation agent, they would be given the opportunity to create a conducive environment for those providing input.
How do you ensure that there would not be more importance applied to one group opposed to the other?
It's going to be difficult for me to ensure that unless, as a result of the evaluations, I begin to see from those people who will be giving the evaluations to the administration that they feel like, even though they're providing input, it is not being weighed as carefully as perhaps others. And that's when we would want to stop the process and take a look and see how legitimate it really was. We're going to have confidence in the consultation agent, because they've done this for years, that they would bring a fair and balanced perspective to both the professional and the classified. But if the evaluations tell us, and that's why I think there's a real benefit to having two of these meetings going on each month, if there seems to be an imbalance, then we can certainly look at that early enough and recalibrate that outcome.
Well, I just want to make sure that there's just as much value placed on the classified workers as it is with the other group. The other is, actually, I don't particularly have a problem with the word refrain. And so that's, I have no problem with that.
Other comments or questions? Okay, let me throw a couple at you, just, I got a conceptual comment, and we'll come to a couple of structural things, make sure, Michael, that we've got the policy in. For my information, when you talk about in this three of 21, to use that example, but what organizations meet the 5% criteria today?
All of the organizations that are doing business in the district. You would have the TCTA, ATPE, and Southwest Workers. So all of the organizations that currently have membership in our district have at least 5%, and they would each have an opportunity to send a representative to these meetings.
Okay. Second, so given all this stuff and the move to the odd-numbered years for the election, what is the process to get from here to the next election cycle?
Right now, staying right where we're at, the election cycle would start again, it would run right now through December 31st, 2013. So you're looking at a window right now of about a year and a half, and then the election process, if challenged, could be triggered again. So staying in the odd years with the time that has trickled through, getting through this, these discussions, if we stay true to form, the period of office would be December 31, 2013.
But would we have an election now to validate this, or we just assume that the consultation agent we have today would now become the consultation agent without an election?
I would assume that we would provide Education Austin the opportunity to move forward. There was not a challenge at the onset, and that there would be the opportunity to fulfill the remaining part of the two years.
So in the, in the agreement where it provides for, since this is an effective agreement, I don't know if we sometimes have to do kind of this interim thing. I know in some of the other policies we've done, where because we're now on the sort of a different cycle, what the, either as the board adopts, we have to acknowledge that we're going outside what this policy calls for in terms of, you know, a designation or election, in terms of timing, because we're going to, if we adopt this policy, what we're doing in the first 16, 18 months will actually be different than what we do going forward, just from a time standpoint. Does that make sense? So we'll have to somehow acknowledge that we didn't exactly follow this policy, because we changed the time, changed the year, did, didn't have an election, but we're not on the same cycle.
If I can just sort of recount what has occurred, there was, there was never an election called for, so there, and it says through board policy, if an election hasn't been called for, then the existing consultation agent automatically moves forward. The process that we have in play currently today, as you well know, was suspended for the last several months, so we've been working really without a board policy since approximately December. If we were to adopt this policy on April 23rd, then it would simply move the system, it would reengage where we're at today with the existing timeframes, and that's why we would have the two-year expiration.
I get that, just, it's a little bit different, because the election before, existing policy says four years, we're going, we're changing to two years, it's actually going to be 18 months. I think we just have to make sure that we reflect the reality of what we're actually doing, as sort of an exception to the exact wording of this policy. But I think we're probably on the same page. A couple of, there's a lot of wording in here about the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board, you know, whatever the issue is, take it to the next regularly scheduled meeting. But, you know, we have a variety of meetings. We have dialogue meetings, we have work sessions, we have regular meetings. And so it says, "Next scheduled meeting," or "Next regularly scheduled meeting." It doesn't necessarily say, "Next scheduled regular meeting." So I think we got to get the wording cleaned up to make sure that if something happens and we're supposed to bring something with 10 days, that doesn't mean we bring it to a dialogue meeting, because that's the next, that's the next scheduled meeting of the board.
Excuse me, sir, are you referring to the impasse provision?
Let's, so we got agreements, so preliminary agreement on page five of, this is throughout the document, so on five of 21.
Okay. All right, agreements and impasses, yes.
Okay, so the board will, when the agreement is, when the approval is granted, the written agreement which we presented to the board, the board will consider the matter, it's next regularly scheduled board meeting. Well, that could be a dialogue meeting.
So what is the language, what is the language that you think is more?
Well, I think what you're trying to get to is a, is from my standpoint, is a regular meeting, a regular board action meeting, it's not just a regularly scheduled meeting.
Regular?
But that, that wording is in here kind of several places where.
We can fix those.
We can go, you will find on page five of 21, that's the existing language.
Right, I think this is the cleanup thing.
Yes, sir.
So like even on election results on page nine, it says, top of nine, "Results of the election should be presented to the board at the first board meeting following the conclusion of the election." That could be a dialogue meeting. And so is that where we're going to present it, and then the board's supposed to take action and prove by the board? I just think we have to get that cleaned up so we don't immediately get in violation. So it's small stuff, but it's, and from a clarification, is the, when this, the approval in here talks about the executive director for HR, would that be Pamela, or is that, because that's the wording that was in here before, probably under our previous structure?
Yes, sir.
So does that mean that the responsibility under the meetings and the posting will be the responsibility of the executive director for HR?
I've always used her for that, for that work, yes.
That's fine. There's small stuff in here, but if you look at requirements of consulting teams on page four of 21, but on page two of 21, you define consulting team as just the designee of the superintendent and the consultation agent? So it seems like that would be a, I'm not sure which, which, if, that seems like that's a singular team. I'll send you, I got a bunch of these little kind of cleanup things that, I won't give them all to you now, but they're a little, I think that needs some cleanup. The question about who pays, that's actually who pays for the runoffs, that's not in here either. Bear with me a second, I got a whole bunch of these little things.
It's, we did adopt the policy and amended it so that the consultation agents would pay for the election. That does exist.
It does under the election, but it doesn't mention it under runoffs. Okay, so conceptual, I think from the standpoint to me about this, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's better in terms of an inclusive policy, but I'm going to think I'm going to go with where, I think, Ms. Moya, hope it's fair, is that would be helpful if we actually asked for input from our other employer organizations rather than just presume that there's an explicit request for their input. And I also think we ought to, somehow, since this is really affecting all of our employees, and they may or may not watch board meetings, they may or may not be aware, but that there's some way to get input to let all of our employees know, because we're talking about going to vertical teams, we're talking about representation, there's a lot of people that may or may not be part of an organization for which this is going to be the way that they're going to be represented, that we actually ask, give them the opportunity to understand what we're proposing for them and ask for their input in some way. Because I, I just think that we, it doesn't hurt, I mean, it seems like we don't, you know, say, "Do our employees what and what to weigh in." Again, doesn't mean that that becomes a deciding factor or a veto, but it's just input to understand, and we have, we have a lot of younger employees that this may or may not meet their needs. I'd just be interested in hearing from some people else to see what they think.
Just a couple of very quick comments. You know, as far as the input with ATPE, Marcy and I have spoken since last week, they have not given me a formal reaction. So I'm referring to Marcy McNeil, so if I can just go on record today as saying they do have the documents, they've had them since last week, and I'm still waiting for some input today. She and I exchanged calls, and that's as far as we could get today, but they have had the document, and I'm waiting for some input from them as well. Mr. Williams, I guess if we are looking at surveying or going out for more input from our employees, I'm not sure that we could hit an April 23 deadline, and I'm not sure that was your intent, but I, I was trying to make sure that we were staying timely, unless the board would perhaps want to suspend it for a little bit longer.
Well, it actually was my intent to get input, you know, I think we've got now, and I appreciate with the work you and at Austin have done, but I think a lot of our younger people probably aren't members of an education association, it's a very different, I'm not saying we need to change, but it could be that we let them know here at the beginning of April, that we have a proposal on the table for representation for them for the next two years. It would be at Austin with, you know, or through whatever timeframe, that there wouldn't be an election, they'd be there, and this is proposed, Option Five. Here, it's on the link on the internet, and if you have any comments or questions, please submit it to the administration or to the board by April 15th or something. So we can just, I'd be interested to just hear what our employees think about this, because it feels insular to me that, but I would be interested to hear what our employees, because we've got 11,000 of them, and probably most of them have no idea about this, but they're all going to be affected by the way we structure this. So I got one more, one more thing for you, I'm sorry. So also on this concept of refrain, I'm actually okay, but I think the key for the board, at least for me, I shouldn't say for the board, for me, will be designating what the consultation items are. I mean, if there's things that are just general conversation, but if you, if you, through conversations with Education Austin, say, "Here are the three items for which there's ongoing active consultation," then I will know these three items are being consulted, and everything else is pretty much fair game. I don't think there are that many items for which there's active consultation, but I think it seems kind of nebulous when it just says refrain from things that are consultation. Let us know what the specific items are, and then I think that way we can, you know, both parties, and I'm glad you all both agree to that, which is great, but also it'd help me as a board member to say, "Okay, for these three items, I just need to make sure that the teams are working, and I don't try to micromanage or intervene in any way. I might try to get informed about the issues, but I'm not trying to supersede the responsibility of the two organizations and the consultation party working on those things."
Exactly. You know, Mr. Williams, in order to address that need, and I understand, because the board's going to be a little challenged, too, on what is fair game and what isn't fair game. The, in the agendas that we've set with, with Education Austin, there are four or five areas of the agenda itself. One talks about proposals, and that's the area that we would want to be sensitive to proposals.
Correct.
And what we could do to help inform the board is that we could maybe through a board weekly update, let you know what are considered proposals on the table, if that might help frame where we're at.
It would help me to say, "Okay, these are the three things for which there's active consultation regarding specific proposals," and just to keep us surprised of that.
I think clarity on what the proposals, the formal proposals, would be the key to maintaining good faith negotiations.
Have a good, Dr. Starfin.
Yeah, Mr. President, Trustees of the Board, I mean, I just want people to know that, you know, through the process, I mean, we, I mean, I can't remember if it's from me, but... me, but I feel like it's from me, or maybe it was from Michael, but I'm pretty sure I sent it from me. Like, I make, I communicated with all of our staff members about exactly what was going on, here were the things we were talking about, here's the order of potential action dates. Just to be clear, our staff isn't shy about contacting me or Michael directly, but people email, call me, I have a teacher advisory group that's aware of what we're doing, I'm having my own all-staff meeting regarding many big issues in the district, everything from budget to this particular agenda item in advance of the action, and especially because we're talking about a tax ratification election and those sorts of things. So I have a district-wide all-staff meeting too that I, that I do, that I'll be all doing in advance of this, this meeting, where I'll be able to talk to staff. But we did communicate to all of our employees at various points through the process, so they knew what was going on, and, and I always welcome them communicating with me directly. Any feedback that I get, you know, I turn over to Michael Hauser, and he discusses with Education Austin as appropriate. So, you know, so we've had a very open-door policy on giving us some feedback, but to be clear, we did not do a formal request for people to weigh in specifically on it, but that is something I think we still have enough time to do and can, you know, jump on ASAP tomorrow and make sure that we communicate that, and then I reinforce it in the other things that are coming up, leading up to April twenty-third. And, and, you know, we'll be able to quickly summarize with the support of, is Bill in the room? No?
I think he ran out, ran out of room screaming when he heard him.
We'll assign Bill to analyze all that stuff and, and give us a good analysis in time so that we can, you know, make any adjustments or, you know, talk to Education Austin about it before we finalize things for the twenty-third.
And I know it's great next to work, and I apologize, but I think before we were about processed lots of options, I think now we've gotten to the point, if I'm hearing you right, that there's actually a specific proposal that you're intending to bring back to us into the, and so I, I think it's, it's worth it to say, okay, this is what we're thinking, this is the proposal, and if you guys want to have input, we'd like you to know, versus that, you know, yes, there's been some stuff, but then all of a sudden we approve it, just for the benefit, I mean, maybe that everyone's fine with it, which would be great, or if there's a few people that are not. But I think sometimes, you know, it's interesting to hear what people think. And we do that all the time, but I think in this case, since this is real our employees, and we need to value their input, we ought to give them the opportunity to at least somehow weigh in on this proposal that's gonna affect them for the next couple of years, and actually by policy, maybe a lot longer than that.
That's correct.
Ms. Barksdale.
Yeah, I have a question about that. Like, let's say we go out and survey employees and hear something, what would we use an information for? Something good, bad, or indifferent? Like, we, I think, you know, my training is, if you're gonna go out and collect information, you have to have a purpose for it, what would we use it for?
Something one of the questions, I'm saying, maybe it's depending on how, but if somebody, if we get a whole bunch of blowback that either A raises things we haven't thought about, or B says, this is not meeting our needs, this doesn't feel like it's gonna work, I'm not gonna be represented in this, I'd much rather have some sort of different inclusive policy, I think I'd wanna know that before we voted. And I don't know what, since I don't know what the feedback's gonna be, silence would be an indication that everybody's, you know, whether you say what you say or not, but it's silence sometimes is a vote also, which says, no problems. But I don't know what the feedback is, so I'm not sure I can react, at least for me, tell you what I'm gonna do with it, because I don't know what they're gonna say. My hope would be, I guess I wouldn't say hope, but I would somewhat anticipate, if the administration and Ed Austin have gone through this, they've thought through this, and they believe that the majority of the employees or the vast majority are gonna be comfortable with this approach. And if that's the case, we should be fine. But we hear, you know, there's like lots of things we hear, there may be some people who are very vocal and, and don't support it, but we filter that in like we do input on everything else. But I'm not sure, to me, not asking is the best way. So maybe if you're suggesting that we gotta make sure we ask it in a, in a good, you know, way that allows us to evaluate the feedback, but I would feel uncomfortable for me if I didn't at least give the opportunities and, the employees an opportunity to weigh in on this, which affects all of them. I mean, this is the primary way by which the, they and their organizations interface with the administration. So I'm certainly open to better ways to ask for that input, but I would feel uncomfortable if we didn't ask, for me personally. Ms. Lavoie.
I guess this is a follow-up to Ms. Barksdale's question, which is, I think we have to be careful with survey techniques and what the questions are and how they're asked. I know, I've heard from the public on two of our most recent surveys, I've heard concerns, and I've gone back and, and looked at the survey questions myself, and I didn't think it was very well done. So, I'll just say there are surveys, and there are surveys, and I would ask that the board president consider Ms. Barksdale as a point person if we go forward with a survey. I think it has to be done very, very carefully. And I, I, for one, would just express the concerns from the public that I've heard that our survey techniques need a little work, and I've raised that before in our board meetings.
And I'll tell you, at least from my standpoint, I wasn't actually envisioning a survey of any sort, I was just envisioning the administration's gonna come forward, recommend this, the thing, if you have any comments or questions, please submit them, so people can, can tell you whatever, so we're not, we're not trying to guide the response, we're just asking them to give feedback, and we're informing them about what's happening. And like any issue, we get trustee emails all the time on different stuff. Some people are more knowledgeable about what's going on than others, but I think it would be helpful to say, well, everybody was aware of it, and they could choose to weigh in, and then like every other issue, we as a board can choose to weigh whatever we get. And we get lots of feedback, you know, on issues, sometimes hundreds, sometimes thousands, like on boundary stuff, you know, that we just have to, that we have to decide, and it's not an organized survey, but people just weigh in, and we have to filter all that input. Not everybody agrees with what we end up doing, but it's just something we as trustees have to weigh. I would not try to structure a survey that tried, that in any way seems like we're trying to guide and answer, but giving them the opportunity for input. Ms. Bradley. I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, jeez, sorry.
I'm a little uneasy with continuing to prolong this. I mean, I, I'm not objecting to what you're proposing, Mark, but, I mean, I would think that it might be better for us to go ahead and say we're gonna continue like we had prior to the point where we suspended things for some minor tweaking, and, you know, continue to work on this, but, you know, set some kind of definite date in, you know, six months or three months, or, you know, whatever the date's gonna be, that we, we're working under the old policy until we reach that date and we adopt what's proposed and new at that point. I, I just don't think it's good for us to be hanging without anything in effect, you know, for a prolonged period of time. And, I mean, what you're thinking may be just done in two weeks, and that'd be fine, but if we're talking about, you know, doing anything, you know, longer, where we're looking at June or something like that, you know, I don't know how long it's gonna take, or, you know, what the results are gonna be when it gets back, and what we're gonna want to do then, but I would just rather have something firm in place rather than continue to prolong this while we try and work something out, so.
It's a question to me, I really was just, let's let the employees know, if you have any comments you wanna weigh in, contact superintendent, or here's the trustee's email box. You know, we get things like this all the time when we're taking action, and then there're people, we, sometimes we get nobody that says anything, and sometimes we get hundreds of people that say things. But I just think it's, you know, we, we talk a lot about community engagement, going out, maybe listen to every voice, sometimes we talk about we don't listen to people, but these are our people, right? It seems like we at least ought to ask them what they think, or at least make sure they're informed of it, so they have the opportunity to weigh in if they so choose. Ms. Bradley.
Somewhat in agreement with Robert, and I guess the reason I'm with not prolonging this, let's just move, move on with it, is on the, the way the CAAC is going to be comprised, you're going, is, you're going to have employees on these committees, whether they're a part of, at least that's my understanding, Mr. Hauser, whether they're a member of one of these organizations or not, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, there will be no questions about affiliations, or you just simply put your name on the ballot and let people decide.
So I think the represent, we'll have the representation so that people who are not part of one of these organization can feel heard. So it, it's, I'm, I really don't see the need, in my opinion, to do a survey, because I believe the voices are going to be there. And I'm hoping that there will be a mechanism in place so that those employees that feel that they're not being heard will have someone to speak to, or whether they can email us like they do already, you know? So, I don't see anything that really present, prevents that. I mean, the only thing that we're speaking of is just the const, the, the impasse part of it, but other than that, I see the representation being there. And maybe I'm not understanding.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm so, I'm, I'm sick over the weekend, so I'm a little goofy, but I do think for me, I'm not talking about prolonging it, prolonging April twenty-third. So I, I think that's fine, I was just trying to make sure we communicated so people have a chance to get input between, Ms. Moya.
Thank you. Couple of questions, or one comment. I don't think, from what I've heard, I don't believe there's any intention of doing a survey. It sounds to me like an email or something that goes out and says, hey, this is, what's going on, this, this looks like this is gonna be the proposal or whatever, you know, give us your, give us your thoughts. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me, I don't know which all, how you do this, so I'm not trying to suggest a method by which to get input, but I, I did definitely, I think I heard that we weren't really thinking about doing a survey, which is good. I, and I heard the superintendent say that, that, that she could get some input from staff between now and the twenty-third, and plenty of time to, to deal with any kind of issues that may come up before the twenty-third, so I don't think we'll be prolonging it at all, I'd be surprised if we, if we did. But my other question was, as far as the CAAC, I, I may be just interjecting my own thoughts here, but since we've got one that's for professional employees and one that's for our, our classified employees, and I would assume that these organizations would, would have to have members from that employee group. So if one of these organizations doesn't have professional members, then they wouldn't be on the CAC for the professionals, right? CAAC for professionals, right?
We were not looking for any affiliation, the organizations would be a standalone, and the employees would be a standalone. There would be no auditing or checking to see who belonged to what, it simply would be an employee who is a professional, an employee who was classified in the three organizations. We didn't intend to drill down as to affiliations or memberships. And, Ms. Moya, I'm not sure I answered your question.
Wait a minute, hold on, let me start over again. It says in here on page three of twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am.
The CAAC shall be comprised of the president or executive officer of any other employee organization that has, that can document membership of five percent or more current district employees in a non-supervisory professional category.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I was talking about. That means Ed Austin, ACTA, ATPE, and Southwest Workers. So, if one of these organizations does not have any members that are in the professional class, they wouldn't be on this, they would not be participating on this. That's all I was, that was my big question, is do I understand it correctly? They would be on the other one, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, I just wanted clarification on that.
Yes, Ms. Moya, you're absolutely correct. There's a professional side and a classified, so, for example, Southwest Workers does not represent professional employees, that was another reason why we wanted to split and make sure that we followed the two components. Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't say that? It doesn't say that specifically here?
It does, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moya, excuse me.
Never mind, that's fine.
Okay, other questions or comments? Let me throw one just, because I have a follow-up to it, Ms. Moya was just, it's not really the same thing. So, if we have, since this would be a consultation education agent organizing this, which I'm gonna presume is Education Austin, and then it's really the other organizations that are part of the CEAC, because they're advising Ed Austin, so that might be ATP and ACTA. Then the thirteen other non-supervisory people, would they be non-members of any of those other organizations? Because the intent is we've got representation from the individual organizations, Ed, Ed Austin's obviously representing itself, so is the intent that these thirteen people would be unaffiliated with any organization so that we really are getting input from a broad base of our employees?
Ms. Williams, the intent was that they could run simply because they had an interest in the process, and there might be duplication, unless we were to carve it out that these had to be non-members, that is a possibility.
Because I'm thinking, I'm not trying to pick on Ed Austin, it's gonna sound that way, or any of the group, but if Ed Austin, you have Ed Austin members of the thirteen, and they're advising as the CAAC, they're advising Ed Austin, but they also can advise Ed Austin through Ed Austin, their membership there, is, are we trying to be inclusive by making sure that we're getting people who are not members of these organizations? Because obviously you got Ed Austin, which is the lead, you've got designated representation from the other two, and the intent is now to broaden the base to get people who aren't members of any organization. But it seems like if you're on the risk of, I'm making this up, but let's say all thirteen members are members of Ed Austin, then you got a bunch of Ed Austin people advising Ed Austin, and they can do that through their own process.
That is a possibility, sir, it is. We could go back and revisit that and make a restriction that you could not be affiliated with an organization, but we thought that that probably wasn't the best path forward. But what that does create is the opportunity for, for people to stack, I think would be the term, and you could see how that could conceivably occur. But we felt like as a screening mechanism to try to say you cannot belong to a certain organization if you represent a vertical team, probably the less of the two evils was to go ahead and simply hope that we would have somebody who would represent the people that they were asking to represent.
So let me take this to the extreme, let's say you have ACTA or ATP that gets one.
Yes, sir.
And then Ed Austin, through the election, gets thirteen, and then you have this body trying to advise the Ed Austin, and it's heavily Ed Austin already, do the other groups actually have a voice and an ability to influence? Because they're not advising us, they're not advising the administration, they're actually just talking to Ed Austin. So just want, I, I think the intent was to try to make sure that all our employee groups had a, had a voice at the, at the table, and what you all are proposing is the voice is through Ed Austin still, not voiced to the administration or voiced to the board directly, but through Ed Austin. And I just want to make sure that we don't, and that's gonna sound bad, but we don't stack it in a way that Ed Austin's advising Ed Austin.
We can, we can go back and look at that in preparation for the twenty-third.
Certainly, this is a good discussion, because we're kind of taking the temperature of everyone again this evening.
Yeah, I'm just one person, so others may not agree. Ms. Barksdale, and...
You're teeing me up for a lot of questions tonight, Mr. Williams, but if these people are elected, what do we, how do, how do we weigh, weigh in at that point and say, no, but not you, or no, but not you, if it's an election and these people are duly elected because they put their name on the ballot, who are we, if we're gonna go with this model to step in and say, but you can't, there's a screening process, or who's, who would be eligible?
That, that would be the process by which the screen, they wouldn't, they wouldn't run for election if they weren't eligible.
Right, I'm saying if they're eligible, and they're, let's say they're all Ed Austin, and they're all elected to cut, to fill these seats, that's the election, that's what we got. I mean, maybe, maybe not, it could happen differently, but I think if we're going down the path of democracy, I mean, we, we're gonna put roadblocks in the way of who can be elected? To, and, and to what end? Why?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Bradley, did you have your hand up?
I guess I've reached a crossroad. Because actually I see both of your points, and you said you didn't, you, you could, you didn't wanna see, you were trying to prevent stacking, is that what you were saying, or?
Ms. Bradley, I was making the comment that, that that could, there could be an opportunity to stack that system if the elections were so strongly favorable toward one particular individual who was affiliated with a particular organization. It could occur underneath the system unless we were to extract the fact that you couldn't run for one of these positions if you were affiliated with an organization. And we didn't, at this point, we didn't think that was probably the best screening factor. But, short answer is it could be, you certainly could stack the number of people who would serve on the, on the CAAC through even an election process, it could occur.
What if we put a number to how many employees could be part of the CAAC that are not affiliated with an organization? I mean, that, that does not have a membership to any of them. Like, five, I mean, if you have thirteen members, just a specific number that could not be affiliated with any of the...
Ms. Bradley, that is a possibility. I think it's kind of difficult when you're doing this by vertical teams to try to figure out where that cut point would be through vertical teams, but there are still options to consider on how those elections could be handled. The, the way that we've drawn it up this evening is that there would be vertical teams, and that would be the sense of balance. vertical teams and that that would be the sense of balance. Now, how you could go back and say out a certain number of vertical teams, some could be affiliated and some could not be affiliated, cutting that piece might become a little problematic.
Then, then I'm going to say this, and I'm just going to be just plain old honest. I think at some point we need to come to a resolution with this because we are at the level of the big people and I want to get to the level of the children. And I don't want to stay on this forever because I think that we have, we need to focus on children. And we can't continue to spend too much time going back and forth on this. So I'm not sure what the resolve is, but I know we need to get back to focusing on kids.
Other comments, questions? Okay, Dr. Kostaroffin.
I just have one clarifying question. Given an exchange several minutes ago, is it that this communication to all employees, did you say that Ms. Barksdale is the point person to write the communication or the survey?
That was Ms. Loy's proposal. I don't think that's, I don't think, I think, I think y'all did.
No, so it is my responsibility to do that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so I, and I don't think we're, at this point, I'm not sure it's the board about excluding or limiting the proposal to just non-Ed Austin people or non-organizationally affiliated. I think I heard people say they would like, they just leave it open. So for me, I'm, I'm probably not going to support this proposal because I think we ought to be more inclusive, but that's, I appreciate all the work you all have done to get there. And, and I think we have an opportunity every two years to, um, look at this and see if it works, right? If, and if we can, as any board, you can always change it if we feel like that it's not working the way it's intended. But I appreciate it and I think it's, it's a lot of work. And I know it's been a lot of time, Michael. Thanks for putting it all together.
You're welcome.
So actually, I don't know that you need to do any sort of questions because I'm probably the one that was wanting the questions. So if the rest of the board doesn't want it, um, you, you can decide whether you think it's beneficial to go ask the employees for their input or not.
And, and just to be clear, we have along the way, just not as formal, like this is the formal request for the last call, but I really don't think that's a problem. I know I can make that happen. We've, we've done that along the way. The other thing is, there are two things I just want to be sure that I was taking away. We're going to go back and just, if I could ask Mr. Williams for some of his detailed comments, if you could get those to me. Um, we'll clean up a lot of the, maybe some of the old language when there used to be more board meetings and things of that sort. I'm going to be looking at page four of two and, I'm sorry, four of 21 and three of 21 in particular, just to see if there's some way to embrace more of an inclusive message in page three of 21 or wherever those kinds of, the C A C C is referenced. And, and just talk one more time about that requirements of consultation teams. And, and then, just wanted to be sure there wasn't anything else really big. And especially sort out that regular board action meeting language.
Okay, that's up to you.
And find that throughout the document to be sure that, that's crystal clear. Um, and then as quickly as we can, we'll at least send what we think is what we heard tonight, vet that, clean it up, and work on it over the next few weeks until we get our lead-up to action on the 23rd.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you, Michael, to you and your team and to Ed Austin for working with you guys to do that.
Thank you, sir.
It's a lot of work to put that together. Thank you. Okay, let's move to our next item, which is an update on the facility master plan. We've got 45 minutes scheduled for this item.
Yes, sir. Mr. President and trustees, as part of the facility master plan framework, the administration is updating you tonight on the implementation and continued development of a district long-range facility master plan. And we know that we're still in the embryonic stages of this. One of our long-range planning off, efforts is to create a preliminary draft of, of a longer-term plan, you know? We'd like to see something that shows our thinking out, you know, up to about 10 years, but also giving the flexibility for adjustment and changes because we know that there's, there's going to be a lot of flexing that happens between legislative sessions and potential bonds and things of that sort, understanding that none of it is set in stone. It will include the implementation of board-approved projects such as past bond programs and even possible future bond programs. We're working into a regular rhythm of the annual academic and facility recommendations, the, some that have been approved, some that are possible projects for the out-years. But either way, just trying to get the complete piece of facility planning that starts bringing all these parts together so that you have the missing piece to what had just a few things filled in it when we were looking at the facility master plan framework. The, the piece that I just want to point you to that is important for you to see, and it's actually in the PowerPoint presentation, I won't skip ahead, our chief operations officer will walk you through it. But if you look at your hard copy version on page eight behind the tab, these, these pages, eight through 12, are really the pages that are the bones for a long-term facility master plan. And while we know in the framework piece, there was very little filled in here, but we're getting to a place now where we feel like we can do a better job of placing things several years out that will be helpful for the community and for the board to be able to keep track of all the things that we're talking about, whether they're approved or not, but are of interest to our community, and will make a big difference in how we think about ensuring that our facilities and infrastructure actually support the academic vision and expectations of the board. So I'm going to ask our chief operations officer, Lawrence Fryer and Paul Turner, our executive director for facilities, to take us through the PowerPoint that was posted for public presentation. Mr. Fryer?
Thank you. Good evening, President Williams, Board of Trustees, Dr. Kostaroffin. My purpose tonight is to provide you an update on the continued development of the district's long-range facility master plan. And the first slide, which should be coming up shortly, it does show how this connects back to the strategic plan. Uh, the district's strategic plan key action step 4.6 states and supports that the implementation of the facility master plan framework, including annual academic and facilities recommendations, data verification, community engagement, and site selection process for the new schools are priorities. Additionally, we also have the board priorities for 2012, 13, which are updated yearly and, and it focuses for 12, 13 on college career and life readiness. If you look at category three, which is a rich portfolio of options, the facility master plan definitely supports new delivery methods to provide an enhanced portfolio of academic options to promote graduation rates and higher achievement for students. And then the, the fifth category systems directly addresses facility master planning and aligned operations. This is the orange timeline, next steps, that is a part of the approved facility master plan framework that was approved November 21st, 2011. Um, step seven of that speaks of appointing a citizens' bond advisory committee, and we're on track of going, you know, going back to the citizens improvement, capital improvement and bond planning advisory committee, SIP PAC. Um, we're on, on track with that. And then the final bullet, or final item on there speaks of a possible bond election, but there's a note saying that the date is subject to change. Okay, this graphic, if you start at the top left, it shows how the strategic plan and board priorities inform the entire process. Um, because from there you go to the, to the bubble on the left of the Venn diagram, and that speaks of the need to address enhance, an enhanced portfolio of options and research-based academic options within the context of the strategic plan. And then on the right, you have the operational bubble, which addresses assessing infrastructure capacity requirements and finances to support each proposed academic program. And if there's a good match, then what is in the center would be considered a potential A A F R. If approved, the A A F R would, would have become part of the annual budget planning process, or in cases where significant capital investment is needed, such as building additions, new schools, major renovations, or land purchase, then that would go over to a capital improvement and bond planning advisory committee or to a citizens' bond advisory committee to, to be possibly included in the scope of work of an upcoming bond program. And then following on down, the last step at the bottom right, then you have the citizens' bond oversight committee, which meets monthly with staff to monitor the implementation of projects to ensure they are completed on time, within budget, and with quality results. This slide is the timeline for community engagement and implementation. It's part of an 18-month process that culminates in A A F R implementation the following school year. The enlarged area is February through May, and activities that are currently underway include establishment of local and regional meetings to facilitate public engagement and ongoing discussions by the administration to identify priority areas or regions for additional public engagement. And as before, at the bottom right, the board's decision on A A F Rs takes place in December. Okay, shown on the previous slide, um, the community engagement process is broken down to month-by-month actions. And looking at the second bullet, on March 26th, 2012, the board of trustees approved the superintendent's recommendation to create a citizens' bond advisory committee. And that goes back to the next steps timeline, the orange, um, schedule that was shown earlier. And the last bullet on this slide shows that a citizens' bond advisory commi-, excuse me, a bond advisory, boundary advisory committee, B A C, has been constituted as an advisory committee to the superintendent. There are various committees and advisory bodies serving different purposes involved in the implementation of the facility master plan and its development. And this slide is a visual of the various committees involved in decision-making. They are, at the top you have the superintendent's facility master plan work group. Underneath that you have the, the SIP PAC, the capital improvement and bond planning advisory committee, which recently completed its effort. And then the following piece would go to the citizens' bond advisory committee and their schedule. If things go as, as discussed, they may be appointed as early as April. Below that, you have the boundary advisory committee, and the last item is the transfers and boundaries committee, which is a group of principals who meet after selected expanded cabinet meetings. Okay, the next five slides are an overview of current, um, and also provide the current status of a 10-year timeline for the district's facility master plan development, which is in a formative state. On the left, you have project names. Some are A A F Rs, some are approved bond projects. There are also unfunded needs listed, potential A A F Rs, and that's all on the left. And then if you look at the top of the, of the timeline, the highlighted area, there's one for 2013, another for 2018, um, show where there may be possible bond elections. Again, none of this is settled, but, but that's what's, how you program things into the ongoing long-range schedule. So the first slide here, what you have on the left column are the planning and implementation of the current approved 2012 to 13 A A F Rs. Some of those are two-way dual language, industry charter alternative education program, industry charter college prep, redesign of A L C and ACES, and Anderson Vertical Team One World I B program. On the next slide, the first three items on the left contain implementation about bond programs, and then you also have the North Central overcrowding beyond current actions, which is, which uses 2008 contingency, um, bond funding. If you go down to the bottom two, those are future needs that a citizens' bond advisory committee would consider, uh, for possible inclusion in the scope of an upcoming bond. So in 2012, much of this is planning, but going to 12, 13, you have the Anita Opphaus Early Learning Center coming online, also the South Bus Terminal, and then in 13, 14, the Performing Arts Center, earliest date with 14, 15 being the latest date. The next slide. Again, more unfunded, um, needs that would possibly be included in the scope of an upcoming bond and things that a citizens' bond advisory committee would consider. Educational adequacy, accessibility improvements, technology, life safety systems, and school buses, unfunded capital improvements due to growth. Okay, this slide and the next slide, now we're listing the, uh, initial planning for potential 2013, 2014 A A F Rs. These have not been decided upon, and we're in the current community engagement process right now to gather information about these ideas. And there's also the possibility that other potential A A F Rs may arise as priorities during the planning and community engagement process. I can just go through these real quick. You have the Campus Initiated Industry Charter Travis Heights, Single Sex Middle Schools for District One, School for Young Men with a Possible Funder, South High School Academic Programming with the funding already available for the purchase of the land, Parity of Access for Career Technology Education, Eastside Memorial Vertical Team Academic Programming and Facility Support, the Kennedy Fine Arts Study Results, and those should be completed in May, and then Athletic Facilities and Program Assessment Results at the secondary level. And these last two may, may grow out of the A A F R category and be moved over for possible inclusion in the scope of work of a citizens' bond advisory committee on the next bond. So we'll go to the last slide. Again, this is just an overview of the long-range planning process, and it also shows how the flexibility is built in to address board priorities as they, um, as they change from year to year. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Wait, one more can you say?
You're not quite ready yet for questions.
Come on.
But you will be soon.
Yeah, sorry. Right. So in closing tonight, on your agenda item, there are two specific questions we had for the board, seeking any comments or directions that you think would benefit the process or the product itself, the facility master plan. And we're also seeking guidance of specifically on whether the facility master plan framework or, or the plan itself should be modified in some way, but we're thinking it would mostly be modified in the framework if there's any interest in this discussion to address in-use academics for a school building. So we're seeing, you know, some patterns in when we're trying to think about new programs or, you know, new sites or expansion of things that, that there is, if we're, if we're leading with academics and driving with academics, do we want to add that to this, to our process in general? And if so, when and where, so that there's an appropriate balance between things like academics, which is an important driver, but then we've also seen in other schools like Baldwin, right? That was the one that would, when I first came here was being built, right? Baldwin, where Baldwin was open for relief. being built, right, Baldwin, where Baldwin was open for relief. And I would assume, given that it's just a very basic comprehensive program, that there wasn't a lot of talk about what's the academic, what's the academic programming of Baldwin going to be, when at the heart of what we were doing was driven by seeking relief for a school site. So, but we're starting to see that, you know, now that we've really got our framework down, that perhaps academics and that discussion has a place, and if so, when are we using it, when are we not using it? And if there is a site, for example, that really needs to be addressed or considered solely or mostly for relief needs, then is there an expectation that the, that this, that we're talking about academics before we start thinking about land or buildings or anything, before we can consider what we do next? And so we just wanted to make sure we had clear guidance on that as well, since it looks like we're doing it perhaps a little differently each time, although we haven't built a lot a lot, but it's something that keeps kind of coming up.
Thank you. Thanks for taking it, Mr. Fryer. He is now ready for questions.
Okay.
So open up for comments or questions. Ms. Moya.
Thank you. I like the idea of nailing down or discussing the academics for future facilities or current facilities, if we're going to, you know, modify use, because I think that'll determine what type of land or property we look for, rather than leaving it open-ended and open to varying, you know, individuals coming up with whatever they think we mean. And then when we get down to actually talking about it, I think it causes a lot of stress and frustration for others, for the community members, parents, students, teachers, whomever, because they made an assumption of what they thought we want, we were going to do, and then, you know, and then we start talking about doing something different, because the needs for the district are different now than they were four years ago. So I think it's, I think it's really helpful to actually start with the academics, or at least that be an integral part of the, of the conversation, to drive some of the decisions.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Mr. Schneider.
Well, I'm still not clear exactly by what the academic use argument is here. I can't think of a time in the last 15 years that this district has not built a new school with the primary intended function being relief. We have built facilities such as the performing arts facilities, the various additions to McCallum, as an example, the Fine Arts Theater there that was replaced, with specific things in mind to do, and I certainly see that as a legitimate part of the conversation. I think in these financial times, that there's also a legitimate conversation to be had about what we can afford to do. You know, I don't know that we can afford to build another 3,000-student high school, general comprehensive high school, simply because that's what we've always done in the past. I don't think that the district could afford to operate it, and especially after, at least what I anticipate happening in the next legislative session, you know, the further constraints that will be placed on us then, it's difficult to see us being able to continue to operate facilities without putting some more constraint on it. But to my thinking, I mean, we're still in need of relief for secondary high school students, specifically in South Austin. Bowie and Austin High are continuing to be frozen every year, just as they've been for the last 15-plus years, simply because there's not enough space. We know that eventually, when the city actually does provide infrastructure to Southeast Austin, that there will be a need to place some kind of facility out there as well. As long as they continue to do so, it's going to be a much limited use. But until we satisfy the relief argument in some way, I mean, I'm still struggling to figure out how the academics falls into place. I don't think it should be the end goal for doing something unless we're, you know, really, we're not compliant with the law unless we do this type thing. And as I said, it does have a legitimate role in what we want to do. Like, we may want to provide relief by building some kind of, you know, STEM, STEM Magnet is an example, or STEM Academy, or, you know, something that is an example. But again, we're providing relief. We're giving kids an option to move from one overcrowded school to something that will hopefully be a little less overcrowded, and provide relief for all the schools that are involved in all, all parts of the community. So, I mean, I went back and actually pulled the board minutes for when we approved this bond, and did what I could to find out what was the driving factor for placing high school land on the ballot, and everything's about relief. It's all, you know, we need to provide relief for some parts of town. So I think we need some clarification or, you know, some data to back up, you know, why, what we're trying to do, not necessarily why, but what. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, I'm gonna say, Mr. Schneider may not, but I think we are providing relief. I think you hit on the question, is what do we provide, how do we provide the relief? Do we provide a comprehensive school? Do we provide a thematic specialty school? What is it we have to do, and what can we afford, and what is it, how do we align to the kids' needs, and what does Central Texas need in terms of our graduates, and what are students' interests, and increase in college rates? So I think that's, I think in some respects, we're providing, because we're a growing district, whatever we do is going to provide relief somewhere, hopefully, as part of it. But I do think the question, if I understand you right, is what is it, the in-use academics is sort of what do we need to be offering to our students and for the benefit of our region? And how do we do that? And then to the extent that we fact, when we think about where to put it, we got to factor in the element of relief. And some could argue, right or wrong, you know, that Ann Richards provides relief for some schools, because it pulls kids out of other schools, and so therefore those hundreds of kids would otherwise be in some school. So I think all this has to factor in together, but I do think you're, if the question is in-use academics, I think it makes sense. And I think, at least for me, we, it seems like we have a neighborhood elementary school philosophy. You know, we really are a neighborhood elementary school district, but when it comes to secondary school, we've got a little bit different. Historically, we've been sort of neighborhood-driven elementary schools, but the geography is bigger, you've got to look at things like what offerings do we have, you know, what are the electives and extracurriculars? Mr. Parkstine, I've talked a number of times about Town View in Dallas, you know, are there things that we need to do differently at secondary school that might be different than elementary, that can meet the needs of our kids better, that we can afford, that provide capacity relief, that may be in places that we can build, because space is also an issue in terms of just finding enough land? So I think the question for me is yes, as you look forward, but I think we need to be guided by some sort of what would, what are we trying to solve? You know, we don't just say, okay, here, we're going to go do this, but what is it, what's the broader strategy of what we're trying to provide? And then we got to look at what we can afford, and then we got to look at where does it need to go, and how does it provide relief to schools? And also, like, for example, what you've done with the partnership at Reagan and LBJ with ACC, I think is also brilliant. I mean, there's also the whole, but what we did was do it at our existing campuses. When those models first came to us, those early college high school models were really done on a college campus, some of them. So is that a possibility? But with, as ACC looks out, and they're looking at bond packages, and can, we might even think differently, that our relief won't necessarily be on our existing high school campus, but maybe on somebody else's campus, in ways to allow us to take hundreds of kids. Can I throw one thing, just, that's, that's one, and then the other about the structure? Something about your framework is that we just went through this last year, and I'm not sure I fully understand, so I'm going to throw this out, and then you can say that's not, I didn't, I missed it. But when we think about the various groups that you've got with the calendar work group schedule, with the superintendent's facility master plan working group, the CIPAC, the citizens' bond advisory, and the bond advisory committee, at least to me, it feels like the CIPAC, you know, was, was a step, but I'm not sure for the time and effort, that it was a, you know, they sort of told us what we already sort of knew, we needed a bond. And I'm wondering if there's some way to potentially get bigger bang out of that effort, that there's some ongoing group, because I think one of the challenges that we run into is, you know, is there somebody that's sort of ongoing assessing the need, looking at how much we need, that's keeping track, and maybe that's what the superintendent's working plan group is doing, that saying, okay, we got $500 million in need, now we got 700, and now we got a billion. But I think the idea, you could almost come to the board and say, do we need a bond? Because I think we always need a bond. Right, it's not, I don't think you're looking at even now, 2013, 2018, I mean, we know that demand is going to exceed our ability to go to the public for a bond program by at least 2X or 3X. So I, to me, I'm not sure the CIPAC of giving you the question that says, yes, you need a bond, it feels like we're always going to need a bond. The question is, when do we think we can go? But is there some group, maybe that's your working group, that's really constantly assessing the, the need, the demand, that's looking at the mix of critical and non-critical, that's monitoring that? If, and if that's what the working group does, I'm not sure that the effort of the CIPAC, God love them, but I'm not sure that the value-add is there to tell us that you need a bond, or don't need a bond. Just my way of thinking. So, I mean, I appreciated all the work they did, but I think they gave us an answer, at least for me, I felt like I knew before they even started, which is, the question is to me more, when do we go, not do we go? Because we know we have facilities that are in the hundreds of millions of dollars in demand. So, but just something to think about in terms of how, what's the mix of those? And then the boundary advisory committee, is that a standing committee, or is it an ad hoc committee? Because at one point, when we had the boundary group, it was sort of standing, because boundary issues were coming up all the time. Is it standing, or is it ad hoc?
It will be a standing committee.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Other comments or questions about the facility master plan?
Well, I'd just like to make a quick comment.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Williams, the senior group would be the superintendent's facility master planning work group, and they are ongoing, and they get to see all of the information as is brought up, looking at capacity, systemic repairs, and on and on. So they're going to be meeting throughout the summer, and all of these other groups' information will roll up to them, so they'll be able to view that as well. And so these various committees will be providing information to help inform recommendations going into the December AAFRs, and as a part of the ongoing, long-term facility master plan development process.
Okay. So I guess, so for example, if that group's meeting all the time, the CIPAC, since it's ad hoc, it almost seems like we, we create it because we think we need a bond, and they just validate that we need a bond. To me, if, by the sheer fact that we create the CIPAC and say, now, at this point in time, we want them three months, sort of, we know that we wouldn't actually ask them to get together and do all that work if we didn't think we needed a bond. And they're just sort of validating we need a bond, but I'm just not sure, there's something to think about, whether you're using resources for stuff that maybe you might ask them to do something else. Because we are, not that we don't have tremendous number of residents that want to help us, but make sure we get the biggest bang for their effort. And they did good work, but I'm just, as we look forward, something to think about as you look at the framework. Other comments or questions on this side of Mr. Schneider?
Couple of things. Mark, you pointed out that we're providing relief, but, I mean, we really need to be careful about how we're providing it, because we've had just a continuing historic failure to actually provide relief at our high school levels. And it causes problems, I mean, we're talking about doing the academics, and the example I'm going to use here is this Anderson Vertical Team One World IB program. I mean, if we're going to provide an academic function for what we're going to do with this, some new facility, not necessarily just a high school, I mean, we need to be able to provide something within a vertical team to do that. So, and I'm not even sure how this came up, I don't have any information on it other than seeing it here. So that's another source of curiosity for me. But, you know, I would caution us that we need to be very careful about the relief that we're doing here, because, I mean, we're going back over four, pushing four years now, and, you know, people advocated for organized votes, got people out to vote on the principle that we're getting relief in South Austin. And, you know, it, it needs to show up, or we're going to have continuing problems down the line, basically, is what it comes down to. And I also wanted to ask questions about the committees themselves. One of the problems that I had with the CIPAC was the geographic representation that was in the group. We've touched on this a couple of times. But since these are superintendent committees, how is the board going to be assured that we have adequate geographic representation here?
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Oh, please.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, as y'all know, you are scheduled to talk about, at least as a starting point, the CBAC. You come to the calendar committee meetings, Mr. Schneider, you know that through Christine Brister's leadership and organizing and helping me get those committee meetings put together, that as y'all have raised questions, they, these things do get scheduled, and we have it coming up, I don't know when, but we, I know that we just got it scheduled in our last committee meeting, of which you were in attendance. So my, what I, at least what I thought our guidance was, was that you were going to schedule that, and we, there were four points, and I remember Christine, actually, Ms. Brister, I'm sorry, pulled out the piece of paper and read the four things that we wanted to make sure that we got scheduled, that were summarized by Mr. Williams from the, the last time we discussed it. So we will be talking about touch points, you know, pacing, when the board wants to get updates, the board, I guess, giving feedback on the committees themselves, helping shape, I think the charge was one of them. You still have that piece of paper? Yes, she does. Am I getting it right? Am I close?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want me to read them?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, because these are the things.
Your mic.
Your mic.
I'm sorry.
What we had discussed was scheduling discussions regard, on the CBAC regarding their calendar, the check-in, check-in points, the appointment process, and the development of the charter and the charge.
Right, so what, my takeaway was, you know, that was the first one, the biggest, most pressing one. We have, there isn't a single advisory committee or anything that the administration has worked on that the board and the public isn't updated in on regarding any of our assignments, and, you know, what's, and what's really hard, it would help me as an administration, is when an issue is raised, you know, we, we try to be responsive, even within the same week in, of a board meeting, but if it isn't satisfactory to that trustee member, that someone has to tell me again. So like, what typically happens is, you know, if there is an issue, the issue's raised, we are responsive, I don't hear anything else again until either the night of action, which is typically what happens, it's the night of action, and I'm hearing that it wasn't satisfactory, but I've gone a period of time where I could have either tried to improve it or make it better with the time that we have left on whatever we're working. So what I would say is if the board, and I just want clarity, because I don't want the same experience that I've had, that we had before, where there wasn't clarity on who's responsible for X committee. I was under the, under the impression that the advisory committees were under the purview of the superintendent. And that meant that, you know, I, just like the CIB PAC, we work to recruit people, I put them on the committee, we do the board's charge, and we do, we turn in our work. If the board wants to tell me who to have on those committees and those sorts of things, then, you know, I, I do think it makes the line more gray again. And, and for what it's worth, having gone through some of the task force things, and then the other stuff that was established by the board when I first came in here, getting it clear who is responsible for what, and letting me build it, and then be responsible for the outcome, and then the board holding me accountable for the outcome of those advisory committees is, I think, best for all of us, or at least it has been clearer to us, and I have a better sense of what I'm supposed to do. But, but what I do welcome is if there are people that trustees believe are, you know, really good people for me to consider, or if you feel like the representation isn't really good people for me to consider, or if you feel like the representation isn't wholly fair, or fair enough, or balanced enough. I know that we presented that committee multiple times in various forms of information, but if, but if for tonight's purposes, you know, I'm about to launch into another one, the CBAC, I'm going to launch into our BAC and other things, this is the night to give me guidance on those things and change your direction. But I, I'll do it any way you want me to do it. I just want clarity. Just, and I, I thought we were there, but, but, and I appreciate the whole geographic, you know, being sensitive to southeast versus southwest, you know, and making sure that we have community representation. So each time, I think we'll get better and better, but, but if the board wants to give me names for advisory committees and appoint those people, then you just need to tell me that's the process we want to use.
Let me go back, because I think there's a difference between giving you names, it's just people for you to consider, and telling you to appoint those people.
Yeah.
I think it's, there's a difference between input and feedback and individual direction. And I think it, it's okay for board members to give you some suggestions, some names, you may or may not know all the people, those people have an interest, but ultimately, if we're going to hold you accountable for the work, then you have to decide who you want, and then it has to be fair game. That if, if the feeling of the board is somehow, somebody wasn't adequately represented, that'll come out later, as we hold you accountable, to use your phrase. But I think people can provide you names and guidance and suggestions and feedback and input without direction. So I don't think I would jump to the appoint side. I mean, if it's your committee, I think you need to own who's actually on it.
So I'd like to make the request of the board tonight. On any of these, on page seven of the PowerPoint presentation, if you have, you know, thoughts or, and we can summarize everybody that we kind of have shaped up to date, so you can see all the names, and we can, you know, send them out to you. And, and we even try, you know, part of what our, you know, when, when, when my, when my operations people do this work, we've just started a pattern now of, you know, mapping it out on Austin. Like, looking at addresses, and looking at where people live, and really trying to be more sensitive to that. But, yeah, we do do proportionality, too. And, and there have been some people that we, we've said, thank you, but we have far too many of whatever your type is, whether it's geographic, or some kind of, you know, demographic point. We just, like, we want to try to get the balance and the right mix. But, but we will, I'll take that with Mr. Fryer, and we'll go back and look at our list of everybody who's going to be working, you know, forward, and go through those, so you can see a sense of who we're looking at to date. And then, if you'd like to fill some of that in and give me, what did you say?
Suggestions.
Suggestions for consideration, I'm happy to do that.
Well, Dr. Starf, what I'm looking for is just geographic equity. And, I mean, in, in the CIB PAC, I won't try and go there. I, I mean, 20-plus people were on the committee. I recognized two names from South Austin. You ultimately came back with four, I believe, and two of those were staff members. And, you know, it wasn't a southeast versus southwest, it was just north of the river, south of the river. And, you know, there was not any equity there at all. And...
I'll be really quick.
Come on, guys.
I did, I did, I mean, for what it's worth, we mapped it all out and shared it with the board multiple times, you know, before we got our, our meetings going. So first, yes, we can work on geographic equity. I don't think that, that, that anybody on my team would disagree with that. The second thing is, you know, I was very transparent about who we had and who we were working with, and summarized that a few times. If that is not enough, and again, I'm just, I just want to be clear, I mean, depending on which trustee you are and how you see the world of Austin, where some people believe south begin, where some of these geographic lines are, are a little different. So, and, and also where the concentration of populations are. But accept that, accept that it's a challenge, accept that we can make it better. And I make a commitment to getting our list put together. Lawrence knows our process for trying to keep it all balanced. I'll get those to y'all. But what the commitment I need from the board is to quickly and, you know, promptly get me your suggestions, so I can reach out to those people and fill my advisory committee. I mean, when, when we fill ours, we fill them, people come to all the meetings, we commit to our dates for meetings, we start on time, we try to end on time, and, and we lay out the whole framework. So once we get people on, we try not to shift and change that so much, so that there is a real commitment to the team. But I hear you, and, and we'll make it better for the next ones.
Can you, oh, I just, excuse me.
Mr. Williams has.
Well, I, I want to give Lawrence or Dr. Chris Starf a chance to finish up what they were saying before we say anything more. I didn't want to interrupt them.
Mr. Schneider, I was just going to say that after your, your input, we did go back and look at proportionality, and that's how that came up. Dr. Chris Starf said, we need to make sure we have the geographic representation balanced. And once we did go back and look at it, we were, we were not right on the mark, but we were pretty close. And as Dr. Starf said, in the future, we're going to get it even, even more, you know, close to the mark. But it looked like it was pretty balanced based upon the results of what we saw in the map that we provided back to the board.
Okay. I, I will just disagree with you. I also want to get some input on this boundary, excuse me, Boundary Advisory Committee, too many bonds, as to how it's going to work. I'd, I'd like to see a comparison of what we did before versus what you're proposing to do now. And, I mean, I don't want the ultimate answer right now, I just would like to see it at some point before we move much further down the line, so.
Okay. We will, we will provide that, but we've, we've, it's been written up, we've done the crosswalk. I'm pretty sure we've provided that to the board already, once or twice. So we can go back and track where that was, and just kind of draw your attention to it again, but we can put that in the board weekly update this week. That's not, that won't be complicated to do. We will do that.
Other questions or comments? Okay. At the risk of our CIPAC friends who are not here, but maybe watching, you know, I know that there were some questions about geographic representation on them, but I don't think, all they did was recommend that we needed a bond, and so I don't think they actually then made decisions about what was in the bond program. So I think what you're saying, Mr. Schneider, is we need to make sure we have appropriate geographic representation on the committee that's actually putting together the bond program. But I want our folks there to feel like we do still think that they did get to work and got us to the next step. Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, folks, it is 8:31, we are adjourned.
Thank you.